Are we recording yet?
No.
Yep.
Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the planning board meeting for Wednesday, February 28th, 2024, in the 1820 courtroom. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency signed into law on March 29th, 2023. This meeting will be conducted via remote and in-person participation. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. First on our agenda this evening, Lee, could you introduce the woman sitting next to your right, please?
Sure. So Colleen kind of stays in the background. She's worked for me for three years. She's been in the town for a number of years. She came over from the building department, so she is the second town planner we have besides Robin. And Colleen's main job is all of the lengthy conditions you always impose on applicants. Her job is to make sure that those actually are followed up and implemented. It's a great partnership because although she technically works in my office, she is a great bridge because she had experience and worked previously in the building department and works very closely with both the building department and planning department to make sure all the conditions of the zoning board of appeals and the planning board are actually implemented and carried out, so.
So she does all the work?
Yes, and I take credit for it.
Thank you. All right, so first on our agenda, we have administrative notes. We have the minutes of February 12th, 2024. Questions or comments from members on the minutes of February 12th? Yes, please.
We have to share microphones tonight, so excuse me. I'm not cuddling up here to Mr. Grandy.
No, I understand.
I do have some comments, and if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. Be my guest.
Borrow your mic. I have a handout just to make it a little easier to follow what my suggestions are for the meeting minutes. So there's one for you if you want to pass it down. So in the meeting minutes, they're concise, and I agree with the fact that they are. But I'd like to start out with the fact that on February 20th, 12th, these are the meeting minutes for February 12th, Mr. Donaldson had said that it's important not to quote missed details and facts. So I just wanted to supply a few of the relevant details and the facts. So the first one that I wanted to say is that on paragraph three, so if you go down to paragraph three, it says Ms. Keen noted that she was elected. So what I'd like to insert is Ms. Keen, let's see, insert Ms. Keen alongside her counsel, Attorney Steve Tifaletti, noted. And the reason that I'm doing that is because this was an official hearing, and I wanted that reflected in the meeting, and my counsel was quite important to that meeting. The second is in paragraph three, the same one that you're reading now, and after the words "documents and affidavits," insert "from eleven prominent community members legally attesting under oath that no racist statements were made by Birgitta Keen in their years of acquaintance or in any official capacity which is a matter of public record," and then continue with "attached to these meetings." And I think that my rationale stands for itself so that I'm not just presented as making a statement and having affidavits, but that the rationale for the affidavits is referred to. The next correction I have is in paragraph four, and it says someone tries to tell you, and then it says how you should feel, but that's actually incorrect. What Mr. Donaldson said was, quote, "how you should be offended or shouldn't be offended." So I'd like to insert that instead of how you should feel because that's not what Mr. Donaldson said. And that's on the PAC TV tape. In paragraph four, I'd like to strike "all signed in her capacity as a planning board member." Now, let me just put this up here. Let's see, "all signed as a planning board member." "In her capacity as a planning board member." "This was a legal hearing, and it has never been legally proven nor cited that I wrote an email in my official capacity." That is what actually Mr. Donaldson said, and there's a big difference between capacity and official capacity as a planning board member. Town council has never in writing or verbally agreed that I wrote in my official capacity as a planning board member. Official capacity is written in Massachusetts general law and the open meeting laws as it applies to this board, and is official when there is a quorum. I'm sure Mr. Bulletin will agree that his website is not written in his official capacity as a planning board member and will also agree that he is a planning board member when he composes his website. He's not, none of us are unelected when we walk out of this room. This applies to Mr. Donaldson only. He has many comments on his Facebook page about his interpretation of what happens at the planning board, and this, I don't believe this is official capacity, and I don't think he would agree with that. We're all members of the planning board even when we walk out the door. Our official capacity begins when we constitute a quorum, make motions, and allocate duties and appointments. The sentence should be stricken as misleading at best. And then in paragraph four, I'd like to strike the statement "staying on point" because what Mr. Donaldson actually said was staying on topic. So that's just a correction. Substitute the word "topic" for "point." And then lastly, I'd like to insert at the end of paragraph four in brackets, "The publicly available October 12th, 2023 executive session meeting minutes recorded an official first apology from Ms. Keen. While Mr. Donaldson did not accept the apology, it did not negate the fact that an apology was made. An additional public apology followed." Those are my additions, deletions, and corrections. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else relating to the minutes?
Mr. Chair, point of order, please.
Sure.
So with the changes, I'm in agreement with the paragraph three in regards to Mr. Tifaletti. I'm in agreement with paragraph three stating the committee members legally attest to oath in regards that it's, actually, no, I'm sorry, I take that back. I'm not in agreement in regards to the fact that whether I agree or disagree whether or not it was a racist statement, I am not in agreement with paragraph, so we go down to paragraph four, and asking that in regards to the signed capacity of a planning board member, and I am not in agreement with the statement of a apology was given in the executive session. I agree that the notes should stay the way they are in regards to the minute.
Okay. So it looks like we have two members that disagree with the way the minutes are written, and I will entertain a motion from Board Member as to how we are going to adopt these minutes, are we going to rewrite them, are we going to have Ms. Keen and Mr. Donaldson look at it and get back to the planning staff and postpone these minutes and look at them again at the next meeting? So what is the pleasure of the Board?
I would say the most direct way to do it is do them line by line. Just agree with her paragraph three suggestion, yea or nay, or her paragraph three suggestion for the larger insert, do one at a time. That way would work potentially, but also postponing and asking Birgitta and Carl to fine-tune the language is also an alternate strategy. I will say that I found the minutes streamlined and accurate to what the votes were, what the decision of the planning board, so I was fine with the minutes as prepared, but I respect Birgitta's suggestions for some refinements.
So again, I'll ask for a motion on which way to go here. Either postpone them and adjust them till next time and reread them with corrections, or we vote with each individual item?
I would like to make a motion to postpone them and have them refined.
So we have a motion, postpone and refine to the next meeting?
So I'd like to make certain that when we postpone them and refine them, that we do them in the presence of Mr. Hartman at his office. I'd like to have a third party present.
I don't want to be involved. Your motions and your actions, you guys decide what you want to put forward and how you want to vote. This is very, this is not something, I mean, we draft minutes, it's who attended, what the general discussion is, motions taken. If you want to get into a higher detail of what you have, I think you need to individually propose those, and as I think David Peckman recommended, make those motions. I'm not comfortable being in the middle trying to mediate how we do minutes.
So my question, the reason I went over these is that what it says about me is that I read a statement and that there were affidavits. When it comes to Carl, you actually put the context of what he's talking about, which, when somebody goes back two years from now, seems to be really misleading and sometimes prejudicial, so that's why I want to redo these meeting minutes.
Yeah, these are the Board's minutes, so it's.
So these are the Board's minutes, and you are a Board Member. So again, I'm going to suggest, as has been motioned, to postpone and make the corrections so that both of you and the entire Board are happy with the minutes before they are accepted. Is that okay with everybody?
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
We have a second on the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand.
All right, I'll sit down with Carl.
Okay, that's unanimous. So we postpone the minutes until next meeting. And this microphone jumps up high and low, so I'm very apologetic for that. Okay, next on the agenda this evening, we have covenants, plans, and releases. We have added tonight B 622, Tupper Hill Lot Release 5545C-30.
So you voted this at the last meeting and approved it, but there are actually two covenants, not one. So this is really just to clarify that it's a release for the both covenants, not just the one you voted at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments, Board Members? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the release of covenant on B 622.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Next on our agenda this evening, we have an appointment, Plymouth Center Steering Committee Appointment. Looks like one applicant for one position, am I correct? Yes. Is Mr. Edwards here this evening? There are two openings. One opening, one applicant. Is Mr. Edwards here this evening? I don't see anybody raising their hand. Is he on Zoom?
Yes, I think, did I see him? Robert Edwards? Nope. So we'll ask him to come at a future meeting.
Please. So we'll postpone that appointment till next meeting or whenever Mr. Edwards could make it to the meeting, please. We have West Plymouth Steering Committee Appointment, applicant Margaret Scott. Is this one position for one or one for one, correct? Yes? Yes, okay. Margaret, I saw your hand come up. Would you like to come to the microphone? Hi. Is that microphone on, Lee?
Yes.
It is. How are you tonight?
I'm very well, thank you.
Great. So did you like to say anything or?
No, I was interested in that position just to better understand what's going on in West Plymouth. So much development going on, and like to be part of the individual that finds out what's going on and sharing the information, which is my major concern, is the communication with the residents of West Plymouth.
Okay. Any other members who have any questions? First, we'll start with Cal.
Yep, okay. So I wanted to know exactly, looking at your background, it's very distinguished, and thank you for all your service that you've done in a different area, especially in regards to federal work and USDA and things like that. Just wanted to know what do you feel you actually would be able to bring to the steering committee based upon your past experiences and knowledge?
My main concern is communication, communication that everybody on the steering committee understands what's ahead of them for the good of the town of Plymouth and communication with the residents. Because we don't have a strong local newspaper or communication means, it seems like there's a lacking. So I think if it's more streamlined, what's going on, what possibly could be going on, and how things are processed in the town. I find it layered in trying to find the meeting minutes to understand what went on and what's going on. The agendas are easy to find. It's a wonderful website, but I wanted the minutes. I just wanted the minutes to see what was going on, and when I tried to follow the trail, I got lost in the trail. So that, to me, is a communication aspect of understanding what's going on in our area.
And how will you help facilitate that communication?
I don't know because I don't understand your website. I found it layered. Sorry. It's a great website, but it's layered, and I tried to find the trail. And I think every resident needs some other form of communication. We started as a neighborhood, a Clear Pond Water Association because of our algae and cyanobacteria issue, and once again, we knocked on the doors of everybody that was surrounding Clear Pond because we didn't know how else to communicate with the neighbors. So I think it's grassroots. That's all it is, is back to grassroots to communicate.
Thank you very much for being candid and giving those good examples. Thank you.
Steve, please.
Good evening. I ask this question of everyone who comes up for any one of the Village Steering Committees, so this is not unique to you. What is your understanding as to the role of the Village Steering Committee?
I don't know. I tried to look at your mission statement and understand, and it's very brief. I tried to understand your initiatives. I also wanted to try and understand what you have accomplished and how you went about accomplishing your goals, and I was lost in that aspect. So I felt as if it needed to be better presented. The website just leads you to a mission statement and agenda and minutes.
So have you attended any of the Village Steering Committee meetings?
I didn't even know there was one.
Sounds like they could use a little more organization over there in West Plymouth.
It was somebody that pointed it out to me because I did not know that there was a open position or that it existed. And when I went on the website, I was just overwhelmed by all the different committees.
Great. Well, thanks very much, and thanks very much for stepping up and volunteering.
Anything, David?
Well, I would say thank you for applying. We need more of you. Your credentials are certainly impressive. Love to have people with your background on any of these steering committees. You've been here 10 years, so you've had some, you know, some experience living in Plymouth for the last 10 years, so I welcome your application. And like I said, love to, if we have three openings, there's two more, talk to your friends, but it's important to have full committees that talk to each other and talk to us. So thank you for applying.
Ms. Keen?
So I would like to ask for a clarification. If there are three openings, I think one of them might be the one that I just vacated, or are there then four openings? Because I was a member of the West Plymouth Steering Committee.
I believe you were a liaison, not a voting member.
So we still have to appoint the liaison because that didn't happen at our last meeting? Okay, thank you for the clarification. Welcome. I was on the West Plymouth Steering Committee as liaison for a number of years, and I was very impressed with your resume as all the Board Members. I would highly urge you to talk to Judy Barber, the longtime chair of the West Plymouth Steering Committee. She's in your community. West Plymouth is the fastest-growing area within Plymouth, so there are a lot of initiatives and just not enough people on the West Plymouth Steering Committee to actually get the work done. So your addition is sorely needed. It's a wonderful group of people. They meet at the airport, so hopefully that's close. And again, welcome aboard. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any questions other than a comment. Thank you very much for applying, and we welcome volunteers in the town of Plymouth because 99% of us are volunteers, right, as far as the town government is concerned. Selectmen do get a small stipend. That's why I said 99%. But anyway, can I ask a question of staff on the three positions? Are they all three-year?
All three years?
All three are three. So we'd like to appoint her to the, one of the 2027 positions, but that's what I would suggest. So again, thank you for coming in this evening, and we are going to take a vote. I'll entertain a motion on the vote.
I move to prove as the newest member of the West Plymouth Steering Committee.
Second.
All in favor of the appointment, please raise your hand, and thank you very much. Please make sure you get sworn in at the Clerk's office.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for volunteering. Okay, next on our agenda this evening, we have Cranberry Commons at Redbrook update on the senior affordable housing being developed by the Grantham Group. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I do have paper copies of the presentation, if you would like those.
I think we would, yes, please.
Do you guys want some?
They are in our packet, but sometimes it's easier to follow with the paper.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
I already have a copy, Lee.
Might be different than what's in the packet? Okay.
Someone's supposed to. Can we get the presentation on screen, please? All right, sorry, apologize. That's a little blurry. I'm not sure why, but. So good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Gorska, Vice President of the Eighty Makepeace Company down at the Redbrook Development. I'm here with my colleague Evan Miller and then Walter Ohanian from the Grantham Group. So I just wanted to go over a few things just to update the planning board where we are. If you recall, we first started this process back in November as far as getting this type of proposal out to the community, and since November, there's been.
Excuse me, Dan, can you pull the microphone just a little closer?
Sure. Absolutely. It's echoing in my back, so it sounds like it's really loud. So over the last several months, we've had a variety of meetings, including some here, CPC meetings, Board of Selectmen, some resident meetings, some private resident meetings with certain folks that were closely, closer to the project than others. And I just want to take the moment to say, you know, we've heard you, we've heard comments from the planning board, we've heard comments from residents, also comments from other committees and the Select Board. And with those comments, since the last time we presented to you, we have relocated the site of this proposed senior affordable housing, but still within Redbrook, but we did relocate it to alleviate some neighbor concerns. In addition to that, we also rotated the building so that most of the building massing, rather than facing Wareham Road, is now facing the Redbrook Apartments. So again, consistent with the size and the scale of those buildings. We also were able to, because moving it to a different location, and one of the comments was about increasing the unit count that wouldn't be attached to our commitment, we were able to get the building unit count from 52 to 62. And what we would propose to this Board at the time when we submit a formal site plan review is that those 10 additional units would be above and beyond our initial affordable commitment. So instead of being 103, it would then go to 113. In addition to that, another, and it's important to note, I know you guys aren't the Board for this, but by doing that, there's no additional fund request from the town, so the initial request from CPC remains the same. Another big comment that we got or concerned was about parking. And if you guys recall, initially, when we looked out for zoning, it was a half a space per unit. We proposed 70% of the units to have parking, but in this new revised plan, we're providing a one-to-one parking ratio, so 62 units, 62 parking spaces. And when we get to the site plan, I'll point out that there's also additional land to the east of the proposed project for an expanded parking lot if it was so ever needed. So just a quick summary of the project because this has changed a little bit since the last time. So a total of 62 one-bedroom units, all deed-restricted housing, senior housing for 62-plus. The 70% local preference when requested by the Select Board remains the same. Again, 100% of these units are affordable in perpetuity, and we'll count towards the town's SHI, and the units are targeted to low-income seniors. And on the right-hand side of this presentation, this is the new AMI breakdown. Right now, the project constitutes of 19 units at 80% or below, and then a majority of the units at or below 60%, with 30 of them being at or below 60%, and then 13 at or below 30% AMI. This is just a revised illustrated rendering site plan. You can see what I was talking about as far as the location in the building. So originally, the building was located on the west side of Wareham Road. We now moved it across the street to the east. When we first moved it across to the east, we had the L shape running along Wareham Road and then going to the east, but after further conversations with the residents closer to this project, they asked about reorienting the building. So we reoriented the building, so now the L shape, the predominant side of the building, is now facing the Redbrook Apartments. This building, size-wise and scale-wise, will be consistent with the Redbrook Apartments. And then you can also see all the parking, one of the parking comments was about on-street parking. I've told this Board plenty of times, I'm a huge proponent of on-street parking. I think it acts as a very good traffic calming measure, but that was a concern of the residents. So all 62 parking spaces here are shown inside the site itself. We do show on-street parking on the street, but that's to be candidly to hold a consistent edge similar to the north of it with the Redbrook Apartments. Those on-street parking is parallel spaces in the direction of travel. And I know it's hard to see here, but right in this area, right here where my, the cursor is, is where we show a dashed line for additional parking if needed. And something like that, I would, you know, when it comes to site plan review, if the Board felt it was necessary to condition, we could condition something similar to in the event the additional parking was needed. That's where, that's where it could go. So the series of next photos are illustrative renderings from different perspectives on site. So this first one here is at the corner of River Runway and Wareham Road. So this is if you were a bird flying up high looking towards the northeast. So there'd be a vegetated buffer on the corner of Wareham Road and River Runway, which this would be part of this project site, which would remain wooded. And then, again, you're looking to the northeast. And then, again, you're looking to the northeast, you can see the building on the edge closest to Wareham Road. From a setback perspective, we're holding consistent with U-Series Seven and other U-Series approvals. U-Series Seven is the Redbrook Apartments. We're also similarly having a two-story bookend closest to Wareham Road. And again, consistent, if you look at the Redbrook Apartments, those are bookend two stories, and then you step up to three stories in the middle. And so, you can see the elongated edge is adjacent to the Redbrook Apartments, and then we have the small L shape that turns to go towards River Runway. And at that end, also, you'll see another two-story bookend at the end. And to orient yourselves, corner River Run, Wareham Road, the meeting house is right here off the page. So, this is another rendering, this would be if you're traveling south on Wareham Road. On the left-hand side, on this side, this is actually the Redbrook Apartments parking lot. Their clubhouse building is right here off the page, their building, first building starts right about in here. On the right-hand side is part of the U-Series Six filing, which is the village, consistent of townhomes and twin homes. So, on the right-hand side would be the townhomes that are adjacent to Wareham Road. And you can see here, the two-story bookends stepping up to three-story, you'd have a portion of flat roof, and then again, bookends with those three stories. All the, not bookends, but from an architectural standpoint, to make it more consistent with what's out there, and for more visual pleasing, you do have those gables at the ends where the building goes up. This next slide is if you were driving a little bit further south on Wareham Road. This is the main entrance to the Redbrook Apartments, and this is the proposed building. Again, the two-story bookends here with the gable roof, steps up to three, goes the flat, and then another gable end over here. And you can see, kind of in the distance here, you have that parallel on-street parking. Again, on the right-hand side would be existing townhomes, and now you're talking about the back of the meeting house, where the playground and community garden is located. This here is, would it be if you were leaving the meeting house parking lot in the rear, looking directly across the proposed site? So, this would be the main drive aisle. And then here, what you see beyond the trees and the landscaping is the parking lot. Again, the parking lot houses all sixty-two parking spaces. These on-street parking spaces that you see here are in addition to that, but we feel that is necessary to kind of keep that same consistent street edge. And again, I'm a huge proponent that on-street parking acts as a traffic calming measure. Also, it's important to note that here, there will be a sidewalk that connects U-Series Seven all the way down to the existing sidewalk that's on River Runway and Wareham Road. This next image here is literally you walk across the street, come down a little bit south. We just wanted to get a better angle of inside the facility, inside the parking lot. So, this would be their main entrance. Again, there's, and we'll go over the other imagery in a little bit, but, so, there's a center island here, you have the parking spaces all encompassed, and inside the corner, that would be the main entrance of the new facility. This one is just, again, further down. This would be if you're walking on the brick walkway, adjacent to the meeting house. Again, just another, another angle looking into, into the site. Last one, again, just a little further down, similar angle, but just wanted to really, really show the street end of the, the streetscape here, as far as how that building's sitting and where it's placed back into the site. You know, these next couple of slides that I want to show, they aren't necessarily, it's not the planning boards, boards' purview, however, I think it's necessary and important that as taxpayers, understanding that this project does request taxpayer funding through CPC, I think it's very important that the taxpayers, all of us here, understand what the reasoning is behind asking the CPC funds. So, this slide here is a bar graph, and this is, bar graph shows monthly rents. And when you work your way left to right, the blue column shows if this was a sixty-two-unit market-conditioned apartment building. And as you go from left to right, it has different variations of AMI. The next one here, where you have blue and orange, this would be a traditional twenty-five percent at eighty percent project. And what you see is that little gray area here, that's just how much less rent than the project would collect. The next one over here is if the whole entire building was at eighty percent. And the one that I really want to focus on is the one to the far right. As you can see, in this Grantham proposed project, with those levels of deep affordability, the amount of rent coming into a project like this is almost reduced half when compared to a market condition. And I think that's very important to know, because what the subsidy allows from the CPC is to allow this project to be financeable, and then also long-term sustainable, because remember, these units are affordable in perpetuity of the project. That next slide here, this is on an annual basis. So, on an annual basis, based on conditions today, so based on rents today, the project nearly is about a little over eight hundred thousand dollars of reduced rent, okay, for the people that are less fortunate that were able to live here. So, in one year's time, this project collects over eight hundred thousand dollars less in revenue than a traditional project would, and that's why there's that subsidy involved. This next slide is just showing over a five-year time period what that looks like. And that red line is that rent gap on a yearly basis climbing. And over a five-year period, the amount of reduced rent for these seniors is a little, it's just about four-point-two million dollars. And I just thought that would be important to note. And also, as taxpayers, when this project is constructed, if there's any cost savings in construction, those savings are shared amongst the partners in the project, meaning Affordable Housing Trust, CPC, and on the state level. This next slide, again, I know this is not as your purview, but I just thought it was important to note, the mechanisms of this project. So, the Eighty Makepeace Company will be donating the land to the Grantham Group. We've also agreed to clear the site, to grub the site, to get it pad-ready, and to bring in the utility connections for the Grantham Group. Because one thing, moving it across the street did increase costs of the project, also increased units. And so, not wanting to ask the town for more funds, we thought it was very important to be able to have this project sit on this site, and then, so we'll contribute the rest to get them back to where they needed to be. And with that, I was just going to hand it over to Walter to just go over some building specifics, and then if there's any questions.
Thanks, Dan. I appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, fellow board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again tonight. Actually, the interior of the building hasn't changed, and I don't recall whether or not we had reviewed it last time or not, but I did just kind of want to go over some of the highlights. As you can see on the top right, that is a formal living room that is in a common space of the building. You can see the nice sitting area, the couches that we have for the residents, a comfortable area for them to be able to enjoy each other's company, that nice home-like fireplace setting, really calm and beautifully appointed. Even though this is considered affordable housing, we still build it and want it to run like market-rate housing. On the bottom-hand side, you'll see a great room that we have for the residents. This is an area that they could host different activities, whether it be something simple like a bingo session that they may have, they may bring in a, someone to do a flu clinic for them. Also, if they wanted to share a meal together, they have a large space to be able to do that as well. All of these buildings are obviously fully sprinkled, it's served by an elevator, and will be built to the energy stretch code. So, the interior of the apartments themselves, this actually isn't a model apartment, this is one of our residence apartments, and I thought that that was important to be able to show you. You can see she has a full kitchen area that this resident can do all her own cooking on, she has a full-size refrigerator as well, a nice cabinetry, nice solid service countertops that this resident has. In addition, in the middle picture there, you'll see the beautiful, wonderful, large windows bringing in a lot of light to the residence's living room area, and then in the bottom as well, you'll end up seeing her bedroom with, once again, nice, large windows to be able to bring in light, nice, beautiful flooring that the residents have as well. It's a luxury vinyl tile, easily to maintain, and always has a nice appearance to it. The residents also do get a washer and dryer in their unit, all the appliances are included, including a dishwasher. In addition, they will have closets, including a walk-in closet as well in the bedroom area. So, the question is, who's going to live here? So, once again, this is a resident of ours, this is John Casperian. Actually, his claim to fame back in the day is he used to light the lanterns in the center of town when they were gaslit. So, if you can imagine, right? Just a great, great person. The average age of our residents that we anticipate being in this community will be about seventy-six. The majority of the residents will most likely be women, approximately eighty percent, based on what we have in our other communities. Unfortunately, you know, ninety-five percent will most likely be widowed or singled at that time. Even, these are all one-bedroom apartments, sixty-two of them. In our history shows that very few will come in as husbands and wife, it will most likely be a single person that comes in. We discussed as well, and we did it with the select board and other committees, is we did let everyone know that during the initial housing lottery process, the select board is allowed to request with the state a seventy percent local preference to the town of Plymouth. But in addition to that is, we really expect ninety percent of our residents to come from within a ten-mile raised, radius. They're coming here because either, A, they lived here and need a home to stay in, they can't continue to afford with where they currently are, or they could be a loved one of yours that you want to bring closer to you, and they would now have an opportunity to live in a fixed-income apartment complex. And like we've mentioned before, a hundred percent of the units are affordable, all sixty-two units will count towards the town's of Plymouth subsidized housing inventory. We discussed the local preference as well. Building affordable housing is expensive, and the state is going to be looking at cities and towns to be able to contribute to that. So, even though when you hear a number of four and a half million dollars asked from the town, four million from CPC, and a half a million dollars from the Affordable Housing Trust, it's a large number to digest, but when you actually do it on a per-unit basis, the total is around sixty-four, sixty-five thousand dollars a unit. And it's very difficult to build any type of unit for that amount of money, any type of low-income unit for that amount of money. So, the lion's share of the money actually comes in from the state itself. And the units that, these will obviously be targeted, not just when we open, not just fifteen years from now, but in perpetuity, these will always be low-income units. And I know Dan had put, just at the bottom of the presentation here, is the Redbrook community will be having a meeting on Monday, March twenty-fifth, a public forum for everyone at six PM, most likely at one of the, the schools. So, that's our presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Questions may I be able to ask?
Dan, do you have any comments before you get to the questioning? If any? Okay.
So, Tim?
Yep.
If I could, just a couple of comments. So, I'd just point out, as you know well, aware, but for the people watching, that this is a requirement of the special permit that the planning board issued. So, the affordable component here is something that was required as part of this special permit. If all the pieces that are moving here come together, this will come back to you through site plan review. One of the things we've heard about is the parking issue, that site plan review could certainly be conditioned upon them coming back at some specified time to come back to the board to talk about that parking, and whether you want to require them to expand that parking based on need. Then the final comment I wanted to make is, I believe it was two thousand and six when we adopted the inclusionary bylaw. And I can speak for staff that when we drafted this bylaw and require every development in the community to provide ten percent affordable, and my example would be, if you have ten houses, you get the ability to have an eleven, eleventh house, but that eleventh house has to be affordable. When we drafted this bylaw, we knew at the time that it was going to cost more money, it's not a break-even proposition, that this is something that costs each developer more than even breaking even. And we, at a staff level, always assumed, assumed that this would be a community partnership, that this wouldn't simply be something that we looked at a developer and said, here's your responsibility, you have to do this, it's in the bylaw, just deal with it. We always looked at this as a community process. So, I don't want to talk about the appropriateness of the amount of money, that's a community decision, but I would point out that I think we've always, at a staff level, envisioned this more as a partnership and not simply a requirement that developers had to fulfill. So, thank you.
Okay. Is this going to require a vote of the board this evening?
So, this, there's no vote that you would need to take, but again, this is going to town meeting, and if you'd like to give an advisory opinion to the town meeting of how you feel about the proposal, that's certainly something that would be appropriate for the board if you chose to.
So, any vote, one way or another, does not support the review that would be required?
Yeah, and again, if that's your concern, I'd make it clear that, as presented today, without going through the rest of the process, you support or don't support this, however you want to word that, making it clear it's conditional upon actually seeing the final proposal before you as a board, reserving the right for that final piece.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear. Okay. As this is really not a public hearing, and I'll wait to, for questions to be answered, I would wonder if anybody here in the audience would like to speak on this proposal? Yes, please come to the microphone. What we typically do is we do three minutes, so you will have three minutes. Hi, how are you?
I'm good. Committee Chair and committee members, I'm going to have to get taller here. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Mari Ryan. I live at thirty-three Mountain Laurel Way in the Redbrook community. Thank you. As you are aware, Eighty Makepeace has an obligation based on the two thousand and eight special permit to build a hundred and three affordable housing units in Redbrook. Eight years into the development of Redbrook, they have contributed fifteen units to date to the town of Plymouth's affordable housing inventory. The two thousand and nineteen memo of understanding for Redbrook specifies that they will construct affordable units at the rate of ten percent of the market-rate units in each twelve-month construction cycle. That has not happened. There's only fifteen units. ADM has not been forthcoming in providing details of how and when they will achieve the commitment to the hundred and three units. That same two thousand and nineteen memo of understanding states that the building inspector shall not issue any building permit until he or she has obtained confirmation from the planning department that the developer is compliant with the obligations to construct affordable units. And yet, in January twenty-twenty-three, the North Village phase of Redbrook was permitted and construction started. Eight families have already moved into that neighborhood where over fifty homes are being built. At what point does Eighty Makepeace be held accountable for their obligation? I'm concerned about the village mixed-use area. You've seen some diagrams tonight, and you can see the size of that building relative to the, the village. As a resident of Redbrook, I have concerns about the overall development of the village mixed-use area. What happens on one side of the road impacts what happens on the other side of the road. The current proposal adds the potential for sixty-two or more vehicles to an already congested area. We have yet to see detailed information about the future development in the adjacent areas of other commercial spaces that will make up the mixed-use village area. Redbrook has been built, according to the zoning bylaws, as a traditional rural village development. Those bylaws require that no building shall exceed thirty-five feet in height or be larger than twenty thousand square feet. The proposed project will occupy a large part of that village mixed-use area, and the size and scale of this building is not in keeping with the requirements of the traditional rural village development. I would hope that you will ask for the full view of the mixed-use area in the context of the TRVD bylaws. Please keep in mind that this project does not, and all the construction that happens in Redbrook, does not just impact the Redbrook community. Adjacent areas of South Plymouth, such as Wareham Road, Bourne Road, Halfway Pond Road, Long Pond Road, are all impacted by what happens.
Excuse me, thirty seconds.
As you look at this specific proposal, now or in the future, I would ask that you keep in mind that Redbrook is a car-dependent community in a rural area. We do not currently have any regularly scheduled public transportation. Last night, the select board voted to seek the age and dementia-friendly community designation for Plymouth. Transportation's an essential part of that. We would hope that these plans are fully thought through prior to asking all taxpayers of Plymouth to contribute funds to this project in the form of CPA funds or additional financial burden on town departments or services, such as the Center for Active Living or GATRA. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
Mr. Chairman?
We have someone walking up to the microphone. Thank you. No, 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 sir, you're already three quarters of the way there. Please, come to the microphone. How are you tonight?
I'm, I'm, I'm well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, good.
Well, good. My name's Joe Hutchinson, and I live at fourteen Summer Suite Circle in Redbrook. And, just a couple of quick comments. My introduction to Redbrook was my drive down River Runway. It was- It was lined with flowers and trees, and the visit to the sales office showed us a table on which a marketing plan was laid out and promised homes inspired by nature. And that's, you know, that's what we bought. That was the reason that we bought in Red Brook. We looked in Pine Hills, but we wanted homes inspired by nature. And a sixty-two unit concentration of apartments in the center of our village is not necessarily an inspired by nation, by nature addition. But like any other large corporate entity, ADM's motivation is to generate profit for stakeholders, whereas the town's motivation for this proposal is to avoid forty-B penalties. And as I have read it, the residents' motivation is to ensure that we get the home inspired by nature, like it says on the Red Brook landing page on their website and what we were promised on the marketing plan. So why does this matter? I think that it matters most because we're going to be stakeholders in three to five years. So we'll end up being responsible for management of the village commons area, buildings, sewer, water, roads, and so forth. And as to neighbors and affordable housing, most of us say that we expected the one hundred units to, affordable units, to be spread throughout the community. But as Ms. Ryan pointed out, you know, there are only fifteen built so far. So the other comment that I'd make is that we don't want a Pine Hills tower. Make no mistake, when you put this proposed building at the corner, at the very center of the village, that's going to have an impact. In fact, if you tour Pine Hills, you'll see a similar, recently developed tower that's in a similarly dense concentration of apartments adjacent to a commons. The scale is different, but the impact on the landscape will likely be.
Excuse me, thirty seconds.
Thank you. Basically, I guess, skip the rest and just say that what I would like is for data and information from Planning Board. I'd like to know setbacks, I'd like to know height, I'd like to know DSF, and the details of what those buildings are going to look like. And, you know, as a town meeting member, I'm being asked to spend four million dollars on a moving, a movable idea, and I'll just, I'll leave it at that. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else here this evening wishing to be heard? Yes, sir, please.
Keith Graublin, Four River Bridge Way. I'll keep it quick because it's more relative for advisory and finance, but living at Red Brook now for eight years, I'm not sure if you all remember, but last April, ADM came before your board to try to minor modification of adding a hundred apartment units through their minor modification system, which you all kind of pushed back on, which I appreciate. So originally, the permit called for about two hundred and fifty commercial units. If these sixty-two are added, we're going to have three hundred and fifty commercial units in a highly concentrated area. I love the Grantham model. Don't get me wrong, you have to have these numbers for it to make it to work, to keep it affordable. It's a great model. I love that they've come back with ten additional units. All I'm saying is it's always been a transparency and communication issue with the developer. They don't come to us first as residents, propose something, and then come to the rest of the people to ask. So it's always been we're the last ones that get the information. Just for an example, I heard them say last week on one of the programs they're on, that after the hundred-unit thing was shot down, Grantham reached out and they started talking about alternatives. Well, that was done late spring, early summer, from what was stated. So why do we not find out until December that this project was on the board? So it's just transparency and communication, and I hope the Planning Board, going forward, as we get to the end of our project here, because we're at the end, we're three to five years out from getting this completed project, I think Ms. Keane said it best, is that, is this our definition of a traditional rural village? So please keep that in mind as you go through the process or looking at these things. The model works, I like the Grantham model, I just think the way the process has been disjointed for us residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the room wishing to speak? Okay, I'll go to Zoom now. Anybody on Zoom?
Al, you've been patient, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Al Donardo, thank you, town meeting member, precinct seventeen, I live at forty-six Sunflower Way. I'll be very brief. As we speak, the Finance Committee is reconsidering Article sixteen C for a very reason of what we've all learned in the last four or five weeks, of the real truth behind this, the finances. And that's really what I've been working on, very diligently getting that out there. If we, and I want people to know that oppose this, they need to understand what we give up. That four million dollars, if we take away the eighty percent, we will recover that in that lesser rent being enjoyed in ten years. If we say, hey, the life of this building is forty years, we're going to recoup that money three and four times over. So I just want people to understand that, what they're looking to give up. Again, seventy percent Plymouth voters, we just heard from the administration that there's going to be a seven million dollar shift on the reserve levy, meaning property taxes, plus you're going to get the two and a half increase, and we all know what inflation has been doing to the elderly. So folks really need to really get their mind around this subsidy and potentially giving that up and what that means. And again, the Finance Committee is voting on it probably very soon to reconsider that. I would assume a lot of minds have been changed because they understand this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, you're very welcome. Anyone else on Zoom?
Anyone else on Zoom? I'm not looking, I'm not seeing anyone looking to be identified.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board now for questions. David? Comments, questions?
A couple of things. You've answered, my first question is why it's oriented as you show it, but it kind of puts the long side toward the apartment building side. I assume you looked at a couple other options and then decided, let me ask all my questions, and that you decided that made the most sense. I would, you know, I appreciate your promise to landscape that stretch of land between, you know, between the project and River Runway. I would like that permanently protected, you know, whether you declared it as open space, because it looks like it would physically have the ability to put a string of apartments or something along there. I would like that, personally, I'm going to say I would like that protected permanently. Third thing, I do not see a crosswalk. As has been pointed out by the neighbors, this is likely to be, especially if it's ninety percent single women, but just whoever it is, wanting to cross the street, I don't see that in any of the diagrams. That may also need a traffic light, as well as just a crosswalk. And a final question, actually, two more. You've mentioned that this applies sixty-four thousand dollars to each project, or each Avengel door, as you say. How much is the actual cost of creating each unit? You know, less the sixty-four thousand. I'd like to see what the value of an affordable unit is that you have to build. And the final thing, and this may have been what Al Donardo and others said, what happens to this project if you do not get the CPC funding? Do you have a Plan B, or is the success of the project built on the CPC funding? So those are my questions, Mr. Chairman, and, yes?
Maybe we head off to the finance group. Maybe. So.
Yes, so before I leave, Evan and Walter will remain here. Quick, on the building orientation itself, we did look at a variety. We felt it was important not to turn and rotate that, so the massing was facing River Runway. We thought it was more important either on Wareham Road or to the Red Brook Apartments. That's primarily the reason why it's in the shape it's in. We first proposed it to run along Wareham Road and go inward, but after listening to residents and hearing their concerns, after reorienting the building, we felt that was a good outcome. I know you asked a lot, and I apologize if I don't answer everything. As far as a Plan B with this project, this project, and Walter can elaborate, if the CPC funding doesn't occur, there's probably a good chance that the state would not fund the project. The state entities for funding look at local support. So in the event that CPC would vote no, and the state would also then probably say no, I would then be reaching out to Mr. Hartman, probably the town manager, the chairman of the Planning Board, and some of you folks to have a conversation of where do we go from there. So with that, in.
You know, a crosswalk and/or a.
Yeah, so right now.
That would be done under site review.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just looking at the diagrams.
Yeah, you're looking at the plans, but there are no official plans to review, so this is.
I can speak to the crosswalks, and my name is Evan Miller. I'm with the A.D. Makepeace Company. Dan introduced me earlier. I worked on the renderings, and I really focused primarily on the roadway inward. Being able to put those crosswalks in there at the site plan stage is certainly something that we would be able to do. And also looking at the handicap tip downs on the other side to make everything accessible as it moves around that intersection is certainly something that we can look at. The other thing that you made mention of was the buffer of plant material that is being shown as existing, and that's certainly something that we would keep in perpetuity.
Good. And what is the gross cost of each unit?
It's about four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars a unit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Keane?
Thank you. So I sort of want to start out with Mr. Hartman's comments that said in the two thousand and four, two thousand and six timeframe, and when all of the negotiations were gone and going on, and the exchanges of TDRs for this traditional rural village development or design, it seems to me if a community partnership was going to be required, that it would have been written into the TRVID and not just an aspirational document that is discussed in two thousand and twenty-four. Moving on, though, I'd like to ask about the ten additional units, and maybe I missed something, and you can explain to me again. Who is funding the ten additional units? And how will those be funded?
Yep, so we're going to be requesting more money from the state. We won't be requesting any more money from the town.
So this is something that.
It would be, so with the state, in addition to obviously the incoming rents, will allow us to increase the mortgage.
So the funds will come from the state, and that means that you won't be in that slide on the far right-hand column as far as the reduced rents, but you'll be the second bar in? Is that correct?
No, so a hundred percent of the units are still affordable, so they'll.
No, I understand that, but you, Dan Gorsika put on, put up a.
We did.
A graph.
A graph, and it said the far right hand is what you aspire to.
Yep.
That column. With the ten additional units and the state funding, will you still be able to be in the far right-hand column?
Oh, I apologize, yes. That's accounting for the ten additional units, I apologize.
Okay. So if you are asking for the state to fund ten additional units, when it comes to the statement that you make on this same slide, the last.
So I just want to clarify, I'm not asking the state to fund the entire amount.
No, no. The ten additional units?
Yeah, they won't be, they won't be able to fund the entire amount, no. So some of it will also be funded by the increase, the additional income we'll be getting from those ten units. So the project will, the project will have more debt on the project.
At the same rate, then, as you propose in the far right column? Okay. You state that the CPC will share in the construction cost savings.
Correct.
And so it will be allocated, and then more will go to the state.
Oh, yeah.
Because the construction costs will increase for the state, and the CPC formula for the repayment will change from the original proposal of fifty-two units.
So, correct, because they'll be putting in more, they'll get a larger share of the cost savings, correct?
Yeah, so if you more or less do your time value of money calculations, I'm not sure if the calculations that Mr. Donardo is currently doing, and I'm not faulting Mr. Donardo because we really don't have the numbers in front of us, actually hold true as far as the repayment to the town over time.
Yeah, so there is no repayment to the town over time. Maybe you just misunderstood that or wasn't clarified properly. He was just mentioning that if there is a cost savings or there is a surplus cash, that the town has the ability to be able to get some funds back. But the town shouldn't go into this really thinking that it's going to get the loan repaid. The town is going into this because it wants the affordable units, and if the project does well, or the project has a cost savings, the town needs to realize that it has an opportunity to have some of those funds come back. Just to give you an idea, Situate for a thirty-unit project put in two and a half million dollars. So let's say hypothetically it was a sixty-unit building, we'd expect approximately five million dollars, right, if you had to use the same formula. The town of Situate got back in a construction cost savings around twenty or thirty thousand dollars. We're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. And on their annual cash flow savings, they ended up getting back around, let's say, it was about ten thousand dollars. So it's a, just if the project does well, the town has an opportunity to be able to get some funds back, but the town isn't going to be getting the four million dollars back or the half million dollars back. It's just saying that if the project does do well, there's opportunities for the town to be able to share in the wealth.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, I'm done.
So what I wanted to say, you just said that the purpose of this is that the town is interested in the affordable units, and I can't say enough about how much the town is interested in affordable units.
Good, that's great.
But actually, that was written into the TRVID and into the TDR exchanges, that we do want affordable units, and the hundred and three that still have not been built were the responsibility of Red Brook to build, and it showed since two thousand and six, when we passed the TRVID, that we were very interested in all of these affordable units in Red Brook. They just were not forthcoming from Red Brook. And so that's where I still get concerned about the financing of this project, the contracts that the town has through this TRVID, and why Red Brook is, your model is great.
Thank you.
Mr. Donardo, your model's fabulous.
I appreciate it.
We get stuck on the contracts that the town has through Red Brook, and that question has really not been answered, and will be answered most likely at town meeting. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Baldwin, please.
Very quickly for Red Brook, for ADM, you were, the statement was made that you have fifteen units so far, and I know that those fifteen, that there are fifteen from There are some additional ones going through in process right now from the single family. Can you tell me what number that is?
To my knowledge, and some of this was permitted before I got here, but I believe that there are ten open lots at the moment that are currently out there that have been assigned to affordable. They're in the process. I know that paperwork has been submitted, and there is the conversation, ongoing conversations with the builders of those neighborhoods that those affordables have been assigned.
Great, thank you.
So a few of my questions in regards to the, all right, so one's a site that's been proposed. So I came out, did a site visit, and eventually there was going to be apartments there at that site. I do like the change in orientation of what, in what you're presenting now, I'm in agreement with that, but I, just for public knowledge or to educate the. I'm in agreement with that, but I, just for, uh, public knowledge or to educate the, you know, your people that are living there, what is going to be, the site that you first proposed, the senior affordable housing, is there anything going to be changed or done there?
Our focus right now is the location for this building, which is on the site of the previous submittal. One of the buildings was located very similar orientation in that. That would obviously not be able to be constructed, and we don't have any conversations at this point to do the previous submittal as was previously.
So, you're, what you're telling me is six months from now, two months from now, you won't be coming in front of this board to propose another apartment on the site where you came a few weeks ago?
I can't propose an apartment site on this actual site.
No, I'm talking about the first one.
Oh, oh, the first, I'm sorry.
The one that's in the, that's in the middle next to the...
The original location.
Correct, original location. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
Understood, understood.
We're, we're looking for honesty and transparency.
So, honesty and transparency, my honest answer, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't make those decisions, to be quite frank. I can get you that information from Dan, who would be much more versed in answering that question.
So, there, there could be a possibility on that original site that...
I think that's, that's a very, that's a very, there could be a possibility that there's not.
Okay.
Right, so I think what you're, that statement is almost leading in one direction, but I would lead it in the opposite direction, that say, I cannot confirm or deny that there's going to be anything in that, on that site. We, we don't know. Again, what we're trying to do tonight is concentrate on this site, but I understand where your question is coming from.
Okay.
But I will, I, I will follow up with Dan and be able to provide you information on that. I just, I don't know the answer.
Okay. And, um, I'm trying to think if, let me look at my notes here. Give me one second, please. All right, so the proposal for these apartments that we're talking about tonight...
Yep.
They're all rentals?
Yes, yes. Yeah, 100% rental, 62 monthly rental apartments.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, missed you.
Yeah, the 62 units in their rental apartments, they pay a monthly rent.
Okay. And what, do you have an idea what the market rate is going to be for those as well as the affordable rate?
Yep, so the 80% will, once again, this is hard to tell where it will go, only because that month, that rent is changed by this, by, actually by HUD. So, the, the 80% rents are roughly 16, the 60% rents are roughly 12, and I think the 30% rents are roughly 700 and change. But in essence, even with the 30% rents, what we've noticed in our project in Situate, which is in the same metropolitan area as Plymouth is, it's under HUD, it's in the same area of median income, the average rent there for a 30% is around $370.
And then those rents are going to be determining whatever HUD says for the next five years?
HUD, HUD makes the adjustments, it's not us.
Correct, all right.
Yeah, yep, they're all remiss.
Well, I, I'm also, so sometimes I ask questions that it's also public knowledge because some individuals that may be watching this may not know or understand the formula and how it works, and they're just maybe thinking that you guys are going to just put whatever price you want on it, but I'm just, that's, just, I, I'm asking for some, bear with me for a little bit, some of my questions, and that's the reason why. Nope, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Now, I have one question. Everybody's asked or made comments that I was going to, but they've already been asked and said. With the 70% initial local preference for Plymouth residents as requested by the select board, and we talk about this initial preference, is that going to be in perpetuity?
It's only during the initial housing lottery.
That's...
So, it goes against fair housing law to do it above and beyond that.
So, the decision would be out of your hands after the initial leases?
Correct.
Okay.
So, then it's a first-come, first-served basis, and there's a waitlist that happens, and then you pull the next person off the waitlist. But like I had mentioned, you know, what I'd anticipate is the majority of the residents will come from a 10-mile radius of the community. It's, you have to...
How many of the residents in the unit that you already have completed, you had mentioned before, your facility that's already in operation, how many residents are from Situate?
Oh, it's, I think 95%.
95%.
It was all of them.
95%.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And we hear from seniors that are looking to stay and live in the town.
Yeah.
And the word is age and place, basically.
Exactly.
Right?
Yep.
So, I was for it in the first iteration. This one is much better, especially adding the 10 units.
Good, thank you.
Uh, lowering the AMI is very important, as far as I'm concerned, because if you stayed at the 80% AMI across the board, it's real hard to try to get anything done as far as the construction and building of units is concerned. What was the square footage of each individual unit again?
They're just about 700 square feet. I think it's 690 square feet for each of them.
And your square foot cost is 320, 330 a square foot?
Your math is going to be better.
Or is it higher?
I don't know the number off the top of my head. I can tell you it's roughly a, uh, it's roughly a 20...
No, that's 65,000 is an augment. That's not what it's going to cost, it's going to cost more than that.
No, it's around $483,000 a unit.
$480,000 a unit?
Correct.
So, divide that by that square footage, someone going to calculate it?
By 700.
By 700?
Seven hundred, I put 750.
Common space, corridors...
$620 a square foot.
Common space, corridors, elevator shafts.
Hmm.
It goes up there.
It's a little bit higher.
Affordable housing is, is expensive.
Pretty expensive.
Very much so. The good news is, is this is all...
Some of the higher-end homes are at $400 or $500 a square foot.
The good news is this is all vetted by the state. They have benchmarks that they have. They have a reviewing architect that reviews everything that we've, we propose to them. They make sure that, once again, they're putting in a lion's share of the money, and they're the ones who are ultimately over, overseeing the board.
Yeah, they got to approve your appliance package?
Everything.
Everything, right?
100%.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, everything has to be.
Right, okay. So, you've definitely answered my question. So, is there any other questions from board members? If not, do we have a motion to recommend the town meeting support?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that the planning board, subject to subsequent site plan review and all final design, recommends in concept the proposal that's been presented by Grantham Group.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. I think it's, I think it's premature for this board to recommend something that we do not have the opportunity to have site plan review that may not actually be passed at town meeting, and so I find it difficult to recommend to town meeting something that we have not had site plan review.
Okay, thank you.
Concept only.
I'd just say with the qualifications that Steve put on his motion, I'd be supportive.
Okay.
Because if only, you know, belatedly meeting their affordable housing obligation is a good thing for the town. So, I think in principle, supporting it with the qualifying language Steve had, I'm in support.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion to support and we're seconded. We heard the comments from a couple of the members, all in favor. Please raise your hand. Against? Four in favor, one against. Thank you. So, we will move on to our next agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to run to them.
Yes, okay.
Pass on.
Most of the, it's, um, Mr. Baldwin has to leave, he has to make, make a presentation. Okay, so we'll move on to the master plan update.
Sure, so I'll speak. I think we were expecting Steve, who is the chair of the master plan committee, to speak, but...
Can you hang on one second? I, I heard you guys talking, and I can't, all right. Okay, go ahead, Lee, I'm sorry.
So, the committee has met twice. We have a third meeting scheduled for this Monday, and we have, they have selected three finalist consultants to review, so we have two interviews this Monday and one interview next Monday, and I suspect that after next Monday's third interview, they will be identifying their preferred consultant. The next step after that will be to look at the price proposals, compare the price com, proposals to how they ranked the propos, the proposers, and then, again, assuming everything's aligned, I, I hope that sometime within the next three weeks, we will be recommending the issuance of a contract for, with the preferred consulting team. So, moving, moving along.
Okay, anybody have any quick questions for Mr. Hartman? Okay, see you none. Uh, the, the update on the MBTA communities?
Yeah, so I'll actually probably just do all three, and I don't know if David wants to add...
Yeah, that's fine.
But all three of these were presented, so one is the MBTA communities that this board has worked with us and the select board on, the, the bylaw. The second is the ADU bylaw this, this board is presenting, and that's, for people watching, accessory dwelling units. And then the third is the historic district commission expansion, which you're not involved in, but I figured I'd give you the update, too. They're looking to expand the historic district to the Bradford Street area as well as the Marina, the Yacht Club, 11 Lincoln Street, which is the old town hall. So, I would report that all three of those, and this is one of the few times I think this has happened in my career, but all three of those have received unanimous approval by the select board, the planning, well, you didn't vote on historic, but the planning, planning board on the two, the select board on the three, and advisory and finance committee. So, again, they're all, have had a strong amount of support, and they'll be moving forward. I, I don't recall the date off the top of my head, but I think it is March 20th, March 21st, that we'll be going before the committee of precinct chairs and just answering questions for them on those articles, too. So, again, so far, pretty good support in the community. Yesterday, I did the, Derek Brindisi does a, a presentation, I don't remember the name of his show, but we did a little update that will be airing on PAC TV about MBTA communities, too. So, again, at this point, we seem to have a pretty good consensus of support.
Okay, any questions, comments? Dave, please.
It's, it's not so much a question, I'd like to pass out to each member. I've been working with many people, kind of putting together a fact sheet and potential PowerPoint presentation for town meeting. So, I've been collating...
Thank you.
... presentations, and again, thank you to forget it from four years ago, five years ago, 2019, looking at AARP and other supportive documents, talking to other towns that have had ADUs, trying to anticipate the pushback we might get at town meeting. But I would welcome comments. I, I plan, just personally, on behalf of the planning board, to go to as many precincts, caucuses as I can with this information sheet, but just would welcome improvements to it, but just trying to build on a, or put together a PowerPoint presentation for town meeting and then use this approach, fact sheet, to sort of individually meet town meeting members before town meeting. So, comments welcome. So, just, you know, it's, it's created as a Word document, so I am not a PowerPoint putter together, so as, as we, you know, refine this and maybe add a couple visuals, I just want to go in strong to town meeting on the...
Can I ask, Lee, if you already have some type of a presentation for this at all?
Not for ADUs.
Not for ADUs.
Certainly, if somebody wants to work with me or give me some stuff, I'm happy to put together.
I put together a comprehensive PowerPoint, and it has lots of visuals of what could possibly happen in town with actual townhouses, and everybody in those houses gave me permission to take those pictures.
Yeah, and I did share that with...
Yeah, so, so I'd like to combine them, you know, you know. So, I think just having slides with the, you know, points, you know, short language bullet points and good visuals will help.
Yeah, I think Lee still has that, she can share that with you.
Yeah, I shared it with you already.
Yeah, and that, but, you know, then, you know, you could potentially, you know, we could create a draft PowerPoint. But, but again, I just welcome everybody's comments to improve the fact sheet.
So, who's working with Lee to create this PowerPoint? Dave, you gonna...
I, I would be glad to, you know, I've been, been working on it. So, to say, it's been interesting anticipating pushback, talking to the other towns that have had ADUs for the last four or five years, because a lot of the pushback is, oh, my God, the neighborhoods will be overrun by ADUs. I don't think so. And learning that a single affordable unit at Red Brook costs $483,000, ADUs can be expensive, but they're not going to be $483 or $500,000 each. They shouldn't be. Although maybe contractors would welcome that. Yeah.
Okay.
So, anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm working on it, I want this to succeed.
Uh, Dave, I just want to say if I'm willing to work or with the PowerPoint, if you need some help and suggestions in formulating the PowerPoint and the visuals and things like that.
Okay, good, thank you.
So, thank you for putting this together.
Yes, thank you.
It looks quite good.
All right, do we have anything else?
Yes.
Yes.
I have something else.
Okay.
I have another handout for all of you, and a recommendation, so I'm going to just pass this out. I keep one for myself. There you go. So, I just want to start on, on the February, at the February 12th hearing, Mr. Donaldson said, quote, "I don't care what happens, I'm here to make it better. That's the reason I ran. I want to make the town, I want the town to be better, the board to be better. I'm making it better." So, I want to help Mr. Donaldson in his quest to make things better. I'm passing out an article entitled "Massachusetts Court Won't Use The Term 'Grandfathering', Citing Its Racist Origins." So, if a Massachusetts appeals court, a court that the planning board has dealings with, calls the term grandfathering racist and will no longer use it, I believe that it's incumbent on this board to stop using the term. We've heard a lot about racism on this board recently, and I'm all for Mr. Donaldson making things better for all of us, the town and this board. So, I've moved that we eliminate the racist term grandfathering from our written and verbal dealings on this board beginning now.
I'd like to have a little more opportunity to review this myself before I vote on it.
Fine, we can bring it back at the next meeting.
Right.
And if you go actually into the Z, it's basically the equivalent of the ZB, the ZBA on the state level.
Well, if you, again, I haven't seen it at all. None of the board members have seen it, so...
Right, so what I'm saying is when you do your research, or if you'd like me to research the actual motions that were made at the state level to eliminate...
Oh, no, I don't think you need to do that.
The grandfathering term. You can also just Google grandfathering and, and find that it is a racist term, so...
So, we can certainly put this on the agenda of, per your motion, at the next meeting. I don't have a problem.
I'm fine with that, but I don't want to let it drop.
Certainly wouldn't feel comfortable to vote on something I just got received this evening.
I don't want to let it drop.
There's two here, I have two. Do you need...
Oh, one is for Lee and, and one is for Deborah.
Okay, anything else from board members this evening?
So, if you could give that back to me, I'll give it to Lee and Deborah. Oh, wonderful, great, thank you.
You want this one, you want this one back?
Oh.
Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor? Planning board for this evening is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.